Six thirty-one, we call a meeting to order. Please note, Dan and Driscoll is not here. I am the Vice Chair of the Department of Education. Welcome. And going to item number two, minutes of previous meetings. Consider a motion regarding the January sixth, twenty-twenty minutes.
Motion approved.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All votes in favor? I will be the same. With one of seven three, in favor, one extension. And number three, maybe business, letter A. And for policies, fifteen minutes that are dedicated to public comments. Is there any member of the public who would like to speak? Next one.
I'll let you know.
And you are in public. Thank you. Then we will move on to what it be on the agenda of the year. And no changes. I think Janet's record could be included.
Keep going.
Letter C, gifts and donations to others?
Yes, we have one for Paul and one for me. Paul, you want to start?
Sure. So I was in receipt of a check for five hundred dollars from Aranco Oil and Concrete on behalf of Exxon Corporation. This is an annual donation to be split evenly between our math and science departments. So that gift is for the purpose of furthering STEAM education. Do you want to separate motions or...
We usually do this.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Exactly. Motion made and seconded to accept. We have a thing, but we expect a double motion. Can we have a nice go for it? Any discussion? All votes in favor?
Thank you.
Mine, Paul. You ready?
An anonymous donor gave five hundred dollars to R.T.M. Lab specifically for robotic and to build up the robots in that program that the student has own fees. Their student goes to use themselves and wanted to do that next year.
Wow. Very good. And did you wish me a second? Motion to approve and accept.
Motion approved, Michael.
Hang on a second. One second. I guess I need to complete. Motion made by Paul, seconded by Jean. Questions? And then we... All votes in favor?
That's fine.
Can you send to Janet? Letter C, your formula ready?
So I have an ask to provide a brief but informative presentation to school board and members of the audience regarding the Pepper Academy administrative team. So if you're in the old, I'll run you through the six-member team and what our roles are and who we are. So we have an athletic director, two deans of students, a director of curriculum instruction and assessment, a director of exceptional services, and a headmaster. What would you say?
You do.
So what each of us does, the all-important question, we'll start going in alphabet in order with our athletic director, who, as we speak tonight, has home games on the docket. His primary role is to manage and oversee Pepper Academy's inter-scholastic athletic program, and he is Fred Vazina. Fred is an alumnus of Pepper Academy, someone who has really dedicated his life to promoting inter-scholastic athletics and student athletes' success. Additional responsibilities that the athletic director has at Pepper Academy is to manage and oversee all co-curricular clubs and organizations. He's responsible for the care, maintenance, and storage of all athletic uniforms and equipment, scheduling all contacts, and arranging for the officials when home and transportation went away, and ensuring the school and district compliance with NHI/AA regulations, policies, and procedures, and that is something that Fred and I work with in conjunction together. Our deans of students running the presentation right now, Amy Parkinson and her complement Mike Zabuda, they are both known in most traditional high school settings as your assistant principals, and their primary role is to assist in the overall administration of the school, such as managing our daily operations. Additional responsibilities include, but are certainly not limited to, maintaining an active relationship with our students, our staff, and parents, overseeing the student conduct and enforcing discipline when appropriate, assisting in the preparation of student schedules and programs, overseeing student attendance and holding students accountable when they are not in attendance, coordinating and implementing school safety drills, and I was asked, this is something that I didn't think about until I was on my way here today, they are the primary facilitators of the students' Pepper performance project, which is a five-spoke wheel that they have to complete before getting their high school diploma. Next, we have our director of curriculum construction and assessment, and that is Dan Morris. The Swiss Army Knight of Pepper Academy provides leadership to develop, coordinate, and monitor the program of instruction, oversees annual updates of curriculum documents, pretty broad definition, of all things curricular at Pepper Academy. Additional responsibilities include assuring correlation and alignment between the state and federal standards and the school-level standards across every subject area at Pepper Academy. He collaborates with all ARBA attending schools on their curriculum instruction and assessment, and here at PA, he specifically coordinates all standardized assessments, such as the SAP, PSAP, and PSA two PEP. He is the chair of our Pepper Academy leadership team, which consists of all six administrators, the head of guidance, and the department liaisons for all disciplines. We also have one student representative at large. And provides additional layer of discipline enforcement when appropriate. Supervises grade reporting, revises and publishes the program of studies, and he does this annually, and, one of the most time-consuming things, constructs our master schedule in coordination with the guidance department. Dan also coordinates the in-service professional development opportunities here at PA, and one thing that we've kind of implemented this year is kind of a morale-building component to all PD days in-house. So the second half of the day after getting meaningful PD, we typically have some sort of a luncheon with the staff and then some sort of group activity, traditionally trivia, something that gets some team building going on in the building. Our director of exceptional services is Sarah Press, otherwise referred to as the Special Education Department of Schools. The primary role that Sarah has is to assure successful operation and staffing of all programs to provide services under the Individuals with Disabilities Educational Act. Sarah's additional responsibilities: she attends eighth-grade transition meetings; she acts as the local educational agency representative for Pepper students; she assigns case manager responsibilities for her staff; screens requests for diagnostic services; consults with district staff during pre-referral meetings; she develops a paraprofessional assignment schedule; and disseminates necessary special education materials and coordinate requisite trainings for her staff. And then there's me, the headmaster, otherwise known as the building principal, for a hot second, we got into that. Primary responsibility is the daily administration and operation of this school, its academic and co-curricular programs, and all support services. Additional responsibilities that might include: fostering and maintaining a school culture and climate that promotes each student's well-being, identifying and implementing multiple pathways for students to succeed, ultimately get their high school diploma, advocating and implementing initiatives, programs, and resources that will support and enrich their education, maintain a continuous communication flow with all stakeholders, and we do that primarily through one call now, as well as email, other mailings that are necessary when appropriate, advocating and implementing initiatives, programs, and resources. That ironed to that one. Implement district's teacher evaluation plan with fidelity, and to develop and manage an annual budget that supports the school needs and goals. Each one of us has a few departments that we oversee, and that includes attending the monthly meetings of those respective departments. So Amy has science and world languages; Dan has English, the guidance department, the librarian, and the tech integrator; Fred has all coaches and club advisors, and those are numerous; Mike has arts and tech, as well as the life studies department; I have math, social studies, and the secretarial department; and Sarah has her case managers, the nurse, and all of her paraprofessionals. All of us, on a daily basis, wear multiple hats, and I would say the caveat to this presentation is the bulleted items are included but not limited to. I mean, these folks are busy, busy, busy every day of the week. We all cover lunch duty. There are three lunches daily. Many times you will see, for instance, Mike usually attends every single lunch duty. You'll see us coordinating to cover one another's lunch duty whenever necessary because of meetings or other needs. We supervise all structured time when we can, so preschool, post-school. There's a lot of students milling around this building, especially after hours. Sometimes we will not clear this building until four, four-thirty, five o'clock, even later. We all serve on the crisis team, and unfortunately, we are dispatched from time to time every year. We consist of all administrators, all of the guidance counselors, the nurse, the school psychologist, the school resource officer, our adult ed coordinator, I'm sure I'm missing a few, but it's a pretty robust team. All of us are on that team, and typically, when we convene, it's early, early mornings before school when we have to troubleshoot some sort of crisis or trauma incident. We all serve on the PA leadership team, as I referred to before. This is also the stakeholder group that makes a lot of our procedural and policy decisions. We attend monthly at-risk group meetings where we talk about students who are at risk of not completing a successful pathway towards graduation. There's a multitude of reasons why, and we've obviously talked about those issues here in the past. We conduct weekly advocacy meetings twice, so we do one on Monday with superintendent, we do another on Friday to conclude the week merely to get together and power out on what's going on in the building, what our needs are, what the students' needs are, just institutionally making sure that we are a team growing in the same direction. And last but not least, every one of us has a contribution to the school budget development process every single year, and that many times involves working with our respective departments. So this is an overview, a snapshot of what we do, who we are. I will tell you that this team of mine is incomparable. I would not be able to do my job effectively or with the kind of zest and joy that I have for it without my complement of administrators. Any one of us can be called into action at any point in the day, irregardless of our title or what our primary job responsibilities are. We are a team, and we've got each other's backs on a consistent basis, and these are some of the most dedicated, competent educational leaders I have ever had the privilege of working with. So I will open it up to questions if you have any. Yes?
Would it be possible to get a copy of your slideshow that maybe we could have some into our...
Sure. Absolutely. Sure.
It would be nice.
Yes?
I just have a question, because I want to understand, and I know it's a question I've heard in the community as well. We have a position of regular of curriculum instruction and assessment, and I feel like we have a similar titled position at the SAU level. How would you explain the difference between the two? Because when it comes to budgets, people are concerned that we may be doing bleeding services, so I was just wondering if you could, if you have the knowledge, if you could share with us that we're not doing bleeding services, that we're already paying for, of course, not for that.
So I think to best effectively answer your question, I'm going to put my curriculum director on the spot to say a little bit about that.
My role is high school-centered. I will coordinate mid-Jon or mid-Susi to maximize some of our resources, particularly around PD or vertical articulation of curriculum, but in terms of the staff that I work with or the staff that I provide professional development for, that's all high school. Chris, the curriculum director for the SAU, works primarily with the other eight tools in EFA, right? So the other two here at Pepper, as well as the other three towns, and coordinates on a whole host of other issues there, but in terms of, you know, and he can tell you a little bit more about what he does, but the staff that I work with, the students and families that I work with are all Pepper Academy. So I hope that clears that up a little bit, but there is, I would say, enough problem-solving that is required throughout the school year to certainly, I would say justify what I'm doing. And I also say, you know, we haven't had a curriculum director for that long, and being a regional high school inherently does present some challenges, particularly around curriculum and alignment, and, I mean, we have a hard time coming up with a calendar that we can all agree on from town to town, and so think about that from like coming up with a, you know, agreeing on a math program, you know, and there are a lot of sacred gaps between all these different towns, and Chris has really done a nice job with that. I don't want to talk too much, he can do that, but that coordination has to break up.
You know, from a sending school perspective, even though I will call it in a big degree as much as I possibly can, it's really about, if we have a question about social studies curriculum, we call the SAU coordinator, and he's got all this information from all the other schools, we blend together, we can research together and communicate with each other. Before, we never had that, so we're really, as sending school, we're kind of on our own. And we wear many hats as administrators, not always curriculum day, to be quite frank. So to have somebody that has that background and is able to, and remember, you know, we say social studies, that's the science that helps, which is that it's a crummy, a crummy area that needs some support, and so it's the first time I've ever been there, when I've been there, we've had that support. So he connects all of those schools together in a way that one of us wouldn't be able to do. So it's quite a resource that we can help to really use and develop our curriculum from all our programs, so that when the students go to go to PA, there's some common themes at least. There's, you know, when I, when Dan said it's pretty tricky to get everybody online using the separate district, however, everybody's coming slowly, on the same page, and math curriculum is a good example of that, where, you know, for many years, we didn't have the same curriculum in the same building, you know, in Pepper, never mind across the SAU, so those are some really important things that are very beneficial. So now we have more access to more resources. It's just been opened up, if that makes me feel.
It does. I just have a clarifying question, because it's not about the person, it's about the title and the function of that title, because it would go on if you were not sitting in that position.
Yep.
Are the functions of both the SAU position and September School District position, do they act similarly except for when to the local level and when on the SAU level?
That's a good question. I think we have similar responsibilities, but then there are components that are very different. For instance, you know, I do all of the college board, you know, SATs, PSAT, and EFAT, the DP testing, and the state science assessment, and I would say both of those institutions aren't known for their flexibility, and so there's, there are a lot of requirements that go into putting that together, and that's not something that is coordinated at the SAU level, right? And that takes up a chunk of time. Developing a master schedule for a high school alone is a whole different animal than what is done, you know, the scheduling is done from each building, but Chris is the SAU curriculum director, does take the leap in terms of, you know, implementing ALMA, making sure that everyone has the essential features for that, but in terms of building the schedule and, you know, facilitating the course requirements and course registration process, that is very much a high school-centered experience and something that I'm in charge of.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question. You can come in.
Again, for Dan, so just listening to you talk about this, basically, it all, the centers, the feeder schools end up here, so you, the curriculum that is developed here, gets disseminated through Chris back to descending schools, so they're on the same page when they get here, they're prepared to enter more like a top-down, I guess, from you to him, and then...
Not necessarily. So Chris and I coordinate pretty closely, maybe on a weekly basis, and it's not a top-down curriculum, it's a curriculum that is based off of state standards, so it's, you know, it's not, this is what we do at PA, but there are many ways to meet those standards, and there is a requirement in terms of coordination from town to town so that the students are coming to us without noticeable gaps in their curriculum.
And I think that's what I was trying to get at, you, what's here, and it gets okayed.
So for instance, you know, when our freshmen come to us, for many years, teachers, I'll say English, because I work with that department closely, they have been able to identify typically what town a student comes from based on the curricular gaps they get in and out of. And that is an aggregate of many years with many students, and so to me, that is a justification of even greater coordination and greater consistency throughout the SAU, and that would be a justification for Chris's role. I hope that's cool. Yeah?
I have another question, just because I'm not a professional educator. When you, when schedule is referenced, are we talking about a time period or are you talking about a teaching schedule? What do you mean by schedule?
Like for instance, master schedule? Is that what you're...
If that's what, you know, you're working on, yeah.
Sure. So quite honestly, a master schedule is really just an exercise in resource allocation and trying to do that as responsibly as possible while still leading all of the students. So in the middle of March, well, back up a month from, you know, back in December, I began working on the first draft of the twenty twenty-one curriculum set, and I'm currently meeting with the department liaisons to put in their course offerings and make sure that we have everything we need, and then in the middle of March, students are going to put in a request for what courses they want, and then I use that data, meeting with all of the liaisons to determine, okay, you have eight teachers in your department, each of them can teach five courses, these are the student demands that we need to try to meet, and we're not going to meet all of them, or some of them, you know, we're going to have to make a decision, you know, if we only have four students that want to take, let's say philosophy, we're probably not going to run that class, and we have to make the most hard decisions just to responsibly allocate the resources. Right? So that is a very time-consuming and collaborative process if done well, and then from there, you know, I have to consider, it's really just a big cyclical puzzle, and I have this huge magnet board that's really more of a totem to my OCD than anything else, but from there, I need to make sure that every teacher has the prep on both of an on block and an even block that they have to prep for the day, and there are other compounds, like for instance, you want to make sure you don't have E classes meeting at the same period because students applying are going to take multiple AP courses, and we want them to do that without preventing, without creating situations that they don't want to participate in. So...
Thank you, that's great.
Just a quick thank you to all of you for attending. It's nice to put faces with names that left on the floor, some of you not, so appreciate you coming.
I have another question. It was mentioned about the department staff oversight, and when that list was up there, it would seem to be assigned to a person, not a position, so I was just looking for clarity, is that assigned to a position, to the person?
Not necessarily. It could be done by the person. We've had some transition over the years of who oversees which department. I think we try to attribute what strengths each administrator has and what skill sets and knowledge base that each has, and certainly if they're taught in that content area, that may help lead us in the direction of assigning a department to each administrator, or if it's preference, you know, if we have a department administrator who prefers the arts, they may form the arts and tech department, so it varies depending on the person, not the position.
Okay. When is it set for the school year? Does it tend to stay like that? Okay, thank you.
I have one, possibly two. Ultimately, and I think this is what kind of brought us to this point, you call them six. Who's definitely...
Rarely.
That rarely, okay, that's the move that's going around. You call them six, who's next in charge?
The five of them. In concert with one another, I don't think there's a clear distinction whether they second in command, popular to, contrary to popular belief in this building for quite some time, I think our administrative team's strength is the ability to adapt based on who's here and who's not and work in tandem with one another. I, just the same way, I don't personally see myself as above anyone, we work in conjunction the six of us. I realize at the end of the day, shots that we've called and the decisions we've made and ultimately that rest on my shoulders and I'm prepared to do that, but I'm equally prepared to have any of the five of them make those same decisions by getting me on the phone, shooting an email or text, saying we've got to decide on X, how would we like us to proceed? That's a team decision, and always has been and always will be under my leadership, and I think that any of the five of them are highly competent enough to sit in this seat and do what I do to give a need arose.
I guess the name of the, in, for me personally, just as, you know, one of five numbers on the board, excuse me, if an emergency arises, I mean, I can appreciate that this is a collaborative thing, but not all these patients are collaborating with me. Sometimes there are emergencies that require one person immediately stepping up and taking that role. And it has, in past administrations, there have been, by default, folks who have done that, other administrations, there have been folks who have been very clearly delineated to say that your team does that, to me, likes the clarity that I personally need to know that in extreme emergencies. I mean, we have spent a lot of time practicing for what we hope will never happen, and those are those types of situations where it would seem by default that needs to be one person who's identified as the person who's stepping up.
It's a fair question, and I think we've ultimately on a much less serious level this year on a few times when I have been out of the building for one reason or another, it seems as if students inherently know that, so they default to some sort of crisis mode for us, and, you know, I think, given his proximity to me, Dan in the main office is privy to a lot of the conversations that I'm going to be having with Patty, and I think any decision that I make in this building is going to be with the superintendent's knowledge and endorsement, so it ultimately does not stop with me, it's a collaborative decision to the top, and I think in my absence, if, you know, called in to make a tough decision or enact some sort of response to trauma or crisis, by default, I would say Dan would probably be the closest in proximity to Patty to make that decision, but with the other four administrators obviously assembling in the main office crisis room to really get our heads around it as a team, and I probably would not be far from making a phone call to them or getting one from them just to say, where are we in this decision so that all six of us are in agreement with the peaceful process that's going on, but to your question, if push came to shove, if someone needed to, you know, really spearhead that decision-making with the five of them, it would probably involve the...
Yes, if I should just add, we did have an issue this year, and I was almost here, and Dan was calling me, letting me know what was going on, we were talking on the phone. By the time I pulled in and got down here, everybody was in his office, they were all working together, greeting me on, you know, I've done this, I have students here, I've called the police, so I just want to validate that they do have much athletic team, and, you know, because Dan is right there in the office and the call comes to the office if something's happened, it goes to him, but certainly, they always, I remember, they contact me and we look back to make sure that we're doing the support thing.
I would say next to Amy, who's probably had the longest tenure at Pepper Academy of the six of us, Dan has the most familiarity with our stakeholders in the building.
of the six of us, Dan has the most familiarity with our stakeholders in the building because of his service to the district both here and at the TRS. He has a comfort level communicating with our staff. And I think, you know, by default, he, you know, he has the kind of ability, again, being in the main office is kind of like a fishbowl where my office resides right next to his. So frequently there are conversations to be had. They're not as easy to be had, say, with someone in Blanchard House without, without the phone or making the trip down and back. Thing I would say about Blanchard House is it's close proximity to the SAU. So it's really easy for Amy, or Fred, for that matter, or Sarah, who are down on this end of the building, to go way upstairs to the SAU in the event of an emergency and the A's with the superintendent.
I think it's very fortunate that you have a just from the team, you're all well-positioned here at the building. I think it's also important to have on your own slide, Dean's students who descend transmission materials in the district, often known as the assistant principal. Those assistant principals are typically the ones that, for the greater school community, that's the person that goes to go to as next-in-command, somebody has to make a decision. So I think if, because of our unique setting here at Amber Academy, if Dan is that person, it just makes sense to me. It's just one of five coordinators. Um, if there's some way that we could identify that, um, so that faculty know, students know, students know. And just speaking as a teacher, um, you know, bringing my own experience into it, when the principal is out of the building, if there's no principal and if there's no clear person who's in charge, you know, there are a lot of little things that need administrative attention. Um, and maybe our setup here today is so clearly delineated that it's not a problem. But it is just kind of good to know how that works. But thank you.
And I apologize for using the word regardless of my group's mission.
I'm.
One of my biggest pet peeves. One of my biggest pet peeves. But regardless, we move on.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much. And thank you all for coming. And by all means, don't feel any bad. Good luck at the game.
Good luck.
Patty, do you want me?
Yes.
I'm by the game. Thank you guys.
I know we can stick that. Yes, don't worry, don't worry, thank you. All right, question four, continuing with the board reports. Okay.
So I spoke to everyone here last week about winter carnival. So I know I said that I couldn't give the theme then, I can now. So the, and the student body have decided on superheroes as the theme. So freshmen, their subcategory is going to be Wolverine. The sophomores are going to be Spider-Man. My class, the juniors, we're going to be Captain America. And the seniors are going to be Hulk. So that is decided now. And the classes are starting their own brainstorm, working towards their decoration and any other things that they're going to use in their winter carnival festivities. So today at our extended meeting, we again broke into our subcommittees. And we usually pair our seniors, who's been experienced, chairing one of the subcommittees, such as gym days or talent show, with a younger student like myself. I'm a junior. Our other junior is, uh, chairing, co-chairing the talent show committee. And then a sophomore is also chairing another one of our committees, sort of prepping them to take over the, being in charge of those subcommittees come next year or the year after that. So the talent show committee is organizing their talent show. It's going to be on February 19th. So we're going to be working on auditions and working closely with the music departments to have everything set up for all the musical acts, the fan acts, which is usually the prevalent topic when it comes to the act that we did at the talent show. Last year it was a really good show. So if any of you are available, I think it's definitely worth coming to stop by for the talent show. That's all I have for your time. I'm always happy if you have any questions.
Questions, comments for that? Uh, I just have a comment. I think it's really incredible to hear about the mentoring program going on for older students, for younger students, and kind of, you know, building future leaders.
Yeah, it's a really good process.
Your talent show.
Yeah.
Is it really a student talent, is it faculty and staff talent?
Yeah, it's a student talent show. It's in February 19th of this, so we do a little bit of time. We're going to start advertising the auditions that we're going to be holding pretty soon coming up here. And then that audition probably is going to take place. It's just sort of a pre-screen and almost everyone gets first into the main event. But we just can't have a four and a half hour talent show. And if we do and the event has 35 kids sign up, we're going to have to cut that down a little bit. But it's usually student talent.
Do you get a good mix, um, different types though? I mean, do you have like sixteen bands or do you have like?
So we do have a good, it is usually, as I said before, a dance and music talent show is what it turns into, which I don't think is a bad thing. It was really good last year. I thought they did a really good job at the talent show committee. But it is a good variety of solo singers or a band or an interpretive dance that we had last year. It does turn into, it seems to be one of the varieties that just thing in one day.
Great. You have a basketball game.
Thank you.
Thank you, of course. Um, is that all, and we leave on Thursday? Mr. Cammidge, budget committee?
Uh, so we were uninvited to a budget meeting last week. And we've been invited to the budget committee this week. Um, so I think, I think our last board meeting was before the last one, the junior's personal meeting, that's your report. Um, not a whole lot changed. They, they did vote as far as recommendation on many of our war articles. Um, other than, I think, one thirty-five thousand dollar, a couple of the trust funds to be funded from surplus were carried. The other ones were not recommended.
No.
Almost unanimously. Uh, not surprising. They did table, I think, three of them for some clarification on language having to do with the name of the fund or something like that. Uh, that should be able to be taken care of this week. Um, the discussion was much the same. And they, they spoke for a moment about maybe tabling all of their votes in hopes that we would come back to them with a more reasonable, in their terms, number, budget number. Um, I told them at the time respectfully that I didn't see that the board was going to be willing to cut much out of the budget, if anything. I encouraged them to go ahead with their votes with the number that they had. And if change came along and, you know, that we can revisit, but, but I didn't expect that to happen. So they did go ahead and do the votes. Um, other than that, conversation very much the same. A lot of talk about how it's unreasonable. Um, a lot of talk about how it's going to affect the folks on fixed income um, in, in the community, which is all reasonable. Tried to repress on them that the, you know, the appropriation number to me is a very important number. If you look at that number, um, it's, it's up a little bit, but not much compared to last year. And if you look over since 2014, um, that number has only increased by about four percent total. And the appropriations number is super important. And I know that most people in the room understand that I'm saying it did on record. Um, the appropriations is what we spend, right? That's the money that we actually need to run the string. And if that number was inflating enormously, then you could look at the situation and say, somebody's spending money irresponsibly, right? But it's not. That number has gone up, well, it's right here on the impact sheet. It went up in 2014 a half a percent, in 2015, point eight percent, in 2016, two point five percent, in 2017, two point one percent. In 2018, it went down five percent. It went up one point three last year and it's projected to go up four point six this year. Those are extremely reasonable increases to the bottom line. So there are other things that come into the number when you get down as far as the tax rate. There are revenues, there are less kids, there's less state aid, there's, there's less money coming in. And we don't have control over a whole lot of that. Um, so I think something that needs to be conveyed to the community is that that appropriations number is the money that we're asking for to spend. And we're not making irresponsible budgets. We're making very comparable budgets to what we've had in years past. Um, and if we don't fund them as a town, then we are basically going to be operating um, at cut levels. Even though we're not actually chasing the money out, we're not receiving the money coming in either. Um, so if we don't fund that, we're not going to have programs that we need here. And, and I think that I've, I've done my best to repress upon the budget committee um, that we don't find this budget number that we brought to them to be a pie in the sky, outlandish number. It is reasonable. It is not everything that we wish we could have by any means. Um, and I completely understand their concern. The tax number is a big increase number to give back. But I, as one of five, stand firm on the decision that you made through this meeting so far, I, I think we're at where we're at. And we've got to, the public hearing is February 16th?
Yes. Six.
Six, thank you. Um, and that's, you know, we'll see where we go from there.
That's the thing, um, I have a question.
Sure.
Um, something against this draft, correct?
Yes.
Um, I was fine. Because it's true that the budget committee did not recommend, um, that.
It is true that the, yeah, yeah, there, it's not on here, so.
Yeah.
They did?
Yeah.
One yes, nine no. One.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I'm a little wrong there. Um, is it fixed?
Um, the teacher contract?
Yes, um, yes, they did not. And the reasoning, at least the voice reasoning for not supporting the teacher contract increase was that the overall budget number was too high. And then if the overall budget number came down, then board members would be willing to support the teacher contract. Also, just for clarification sake, since we wrapped that up, it was said in Amber's presentation that the 4/36 night before for next year was a 1.8% increase. There was some disagreement with the budget committee or confusion as to what that number actually meant. Um, and so just for clarification, the 1.8 is the percentage raise if you look at a particular step. So if there's a teacher with a master's degree on step seven, that line goes up 1.8%. The total number represents a larger portion because that 1.8% is not taken into account um, the addition of steps, the people that will get additional steps and all these excellent things. So that's just to clarify that, to break.
Then to clarify your clarification, isn't it true that there are folks who are not going to get a step increase because there is a top scale? So that therefore they will get a 1.8% increase?
Correct.
And I think that needs to be, you know, understood as well that, um, you know, most seasoned professionals are getting a little knowledge and you must learn with professionals now.
Yep. The other thing that I, I guess I'll point out just for record, um, and I'm going off of two-week-old memory here, so, um, I'll double-check these numbers. But if I remember right, health insurance ends up being three and a half million dollars. Um, when you're looking at a budget of 26 million, three and a half million is a big chunk of that. Um, I think that's something that everybody just needs to kind of take into consideration. Um, is, you know, when you, when you look at how healthcare in general is funded and how much you pay as an individual for healthcare, um, you can't just look at what comes out of your paycheck or what you pay, but also a good chunk of those property taxes that you pay are paying for somebody else's healthcare. Um, so just to note that that's, I mean, health insurance rates go up every time. We can't do anything about it. And we, we're out to be right now. Don't think it's going to result in anything. And so that, that's something that I think everybody just kind of needs to keep in their mind.
And my last question. Did you mention it earlier, um, that this particular, the school warrant and the school budget will be discussed at the budget committee meeting this Thursday?
Yes, um, I don't know in what capacity, but we have been invited to attend. Uh, I haven't seen the agenda yet. I do believe you have to be there earlier today, but I haven't. But yes, we are on the, on the agenda for Thursday.
Any other questions for me? Thank you. Uh, eighth report.
Not until February 10th or above, they're asked for it.
Hill renovation.
Um, I have not had any communications with Kevin since the last meeting. I know he was on the calendar to come to Suzy's staff meeting. Do you want to?
Just probably reply right in, my principal's report?
Yeah, there you go.
Kevin's Amber committee, I'll see my thing, there are five people in the standing right now. Okay. Um, and the staff was given a survey about the needs of our state. And, um, the team basically just explained what the survey results came out of. Um, I know we're planning on coming and sharing that information with you all to show where we are. Um, as far as our other staff meetings that are coming up, we have a social regulation, um, staff meeting at the top of February. And then a trauma assisted school meeting on the following, um, February date. So we are really digging into that with our social emotional learning, which we need because our students are coming in as different students now than they were like this year. If I want more trauma. If you ask the faculty, uh, just basic indicators, do you have a child who comes from a divorced family? Raise your hand. If you have a child that, um, has been homeless, raise your hand. If you have a child in your class that, um, lost a parent. Yeah. And it's over and over and over. So we're really trying to get ahead of that and be trained now so that as our population increases, um, we're ready to take that one. We have a couple of highlights going on at Hill. First of all, um, Kristen Lisette, who is the recipient of the McCullough Sabbatical Award, has, um, came to Hill to look at our steam lab. Uh, she is going across the state of New Hampshire to look at project-based funding and innovative things that are happening around the state. Then highlights it on, uh, educators' website. And if you go on it, we were highlighted for our steam lab. Jenny Jones has donated some job with that. And previously stated, parents feel like that has been a, um, a really successful program in our donating of that. So. Uh, there's another partnership between Heinemann Publishing Company, the Literacy Club, and, uh, Irene Fountain, um, and Gamesuit now, uh, with our Literacy coordinators, Parrish Sharella, filming modulars for, um, teachers um, for Literacy. Sarah is known, I don't know, really is one of the lead teachers and lead, uh, lead coaches um, in the Heinemann area. And so our students are highlighted in these modulars that other coaches share, um, with their teaching. So, uh, that's what's happening.
Questions, come in.
Yeah.
Just one quick one, um, and I don't need to put it on the spot.
Okay.
Popping my head. Um, I know there was some concern going into, you know, the first year at, for everybody being in the same school, um, with modulars and everything. Um, how, how do you feel that that's? I haven't heard much about it. I haven't heard, you know, good, bad or indifferent? Are the, are the programs that are in the modular building happy?
I think everybody wants more of it.
Sure.
That's obviously an opinion. And I think that's going to be brought before you guys. Um, you know, we were set, um, we had our game plan. And they, I think that it was very thorough going into this year. However, we did have a really strong increase in student population. And many of those were coded students that had dictated some different needs that we really had no, no one could have thought that that was coming. Um, and so we do have some teachers who are sharing some spaces that are pretty tight. Um, and we need to, we need that and to allocate maybe, we need to make some tough decisions. But as far as modulars, they're fantastic. They have air conditioning, you know, everybody wants to be in those. They're super hot.
That's what I was going, but I've heard that from other districts. And I've had them, people that go there end up not wanting to come back and building.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Actually, I have a question. Is it modular?
Is it modulars plural or is it one?
It's one with two plus one.
Okay, because I thought we were going to get two modulars.
No, just one.
Just one.
Two modules. They came with two and they put it together.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Well, we just had tryouts for Aladdin, um, and that could be our spring musical, which is always, um, Lysy Morris is the director. She does a men's job, it's actually one of our more popular activities with the building. It's pretty, pretty amazing to see the talent that we have in the building. It's actually tough because sometimes the kids are really quiet and you don't see much. Next thing you know, they're on stage, you're like, I need to try out like apparently, I don't think, but I'm not, I'm not exaggerating. Very exceptional. So that's, that's always exciting to have. We did have our seventh and eighth grade concert in the last week, I think. Um, and it was up at P A because of the numbers, so that will still be out tomorrow and very well. Uh, we've been doing something a little different, and not different, but it combines, because of scheduling, seventh grade band practices by themselves and eighth grade bands practices by themselves. Like eighth grade love life, so we've been working on the same charts and music, and we put them together for a concert. So it's really, I mean, P A stage is relatively large and it was packed with music in seventh and eighth grade. Uh, next week is our fifth and sixth grade. Frankly, it's really large to try to do it all at once, and that's great, but so I'm looking forward to next week to see the fifth and sixth grade. Fifth grade, this is the first year that we've really had them as beginners, so we're lucky to get really well. We're, you know, but you're, you're excited about performing. Um, I want to echo what Suzy's talking about as far as training staff, trauma students. The one thing that we've been working on and trying to develop with is some kind of support with teachers because there's a real effect when trauma students are in the building and they'll be dealing with us. We're trying to do some self-care and roll anything out there. Really trying to support staff because it's not one thing to do. We can't, um, consider that trauma speed that's developing, so we're really trying to work on putting something together for staff so that they feel supported and possible to get. First is the day-to-day grind that we're going through, but something that's really important. I don't think we should overlook. Uh, we have a tendency to, you know, assume that teachers are, are fine, but they're adults too, and they have families, and they take this stuff all, I mean, it's not, you know, it's not like, oh, bell rings and ring goes. So we're, we are, our staff is awesome, but at the same time, I don't want to overlook those pieces for them. It's really important. Our last staff meeting we had was curriculum base. Um, and speaking of curriculum, this is what we spend a lot of time in, in departments, and they work on their curriculum, developing the metrics and assessments and making sure we have a spiral curriculum in all the areas. And the staff spend quite a lot of time, dedicate at least once a month for that, for that. Uh, S and H U started today, so we had, it's pretty, pretty neat to see our sophomore group, I believe. Um, and I spoke with them and they come and they're like, wow, are they green? But, um, but they're really excited and it's really, it's really nice to see the interaction between our staff and the students. It gives our staff a chance to talk about their curriculum when they knew. And we also get to learn from them because we have professors from the college that come. There's a nice, we live working relationship to work together. And we're actually trying to set up an opportunity for some of those students to actually play in with our teachers. So that, that's, you know, usefulness only brings some excitement and some new ideas that often run. Uh, that was this morning, and that'll be every Tuesday through, as the I U R is still a number.
Questions or comments?
Yeah.
Um, I just have a question talking about the faculty self-care that's needed, which we have dealing with trauma in schools. I know we sat through a board S A U meeting with the S A U cares.
Yep.
And we were told that kind of in the infancy stage.
Yeah, correct.
Is that something that you guys are available to tap into now and that you can utilize?
Yeah, we hope so. I think they're, they're right now, my understanding is that they're in the data collecting phase. Trying to see what programs we can offer. Um, but yeah, we're, you know, we're open for anything, you know? And that's another example of how using the S A U resources.
Sure.
Uh, because it's actually that curriculum director's part of that. So they have to use all those resources, so we can support certain students. I mean, that's our main objective also, staff. Uh, so yes, we can use that as, as, absolutely.
Okay, but as of right now, besides data collection, it hasn't?
Yeah, it's quite a process to even collect and put it together where it's being, and I'm not part of it.
No, I understand.
Yeah.
We're pretty focused on, on social emotional and trauma. And so what we need collectively as an S A U leadership team, we're constantly bouncing, I feel, a lot with each other as to what other schools are doing and how they're supporting, you know, what kind of doing it as a leadership team as well as with the community.
And our March T V day, that may be why that's the topic of focus. And we have actually set at least one breakout session for the development of care.
Thank you.
Taking up a lot of your airtime tonight, so I'm just going to keep it brief. We started semester two, three. Um, small glitch with Alma, some connectivity issues, but staff and students persevered. We're in the midst of the train grades for semester one, holding out to parents and students for progress for semester one. And I would, you know, feedback what John certainly said and to lesser extent Suzy. Um, just today I was contacted by one of our school counselors who happens to be on the S A U cares committee. Um, and his request to me is time to meet with administrators to discuss what he has seen in a lot of the staff, which is compassion and sort of fatigue, both for their students and for one another as staff members. And I think in this building this year, we've seen a lot of our staff who for one reason or another have, you know, been down on their luck, a family emergency or family crisis or personal health crisis. For one reason or another, our staff are kind of tapped out and we're in the dog days of winter. So looking for that, that respite or that rescue, trying to support one another and using one another as helpless. That's kind of where it's deep about. So we're going to meet with him later this week, have an admin team, and talk a little bit about how we can support the staff who are desperately trying to support one another in tough times.
I really look forward to hearing some statements, knowing what's at stake as possible to help the staff.
Sure.
Because I think that's an issue that we would like some more feedback on from Constance.
I think unfortunately, um, staff don't get the kudo much of it, you know? And I think that's wide ranging, whether it's for myself or the community or whatever. Um, and I, and I think that's something that needs to be, and I think the increase, you know, some things we're dealing with now, I think it's beginning to wear, I suppose, but, you know, that's one thing that I want to do better, I want to support those people. And there's many ways to do it, but it's something that we need to focus on.
Thank you.
I, I, yeah, I mean, I was, I did an again, I think it was listening to, you know, students with traumas, the teachers suffering fatigue, not only from personal, but also from getting with the students. You know, I'll go back and I mentioned this a year ago now. I think it would really be important if we investigated, putting in place a culture climate survey so you can best identify where the, the trouble areas are and how the allocation of resources that we have at our disposal can help mitigate the situations that it seems like we're kind of back into right now. And then, you know, like, it is a rough time of year, it's dark, it's middle of winter. Everybody's, you know, that's, you know, seasonal affective disorder. But, you know, this goes beyond, and we've heard about this before, you know, and we've been hearing about it now. So, um, if we can get something moving forward, maybe put on the agenda to investigate how we can get something like this in place so that you, you all and the teachers and even the students can work together to make things easier for everyone. I think that'd be important moving forward and great help to everyone, anyone, culturally, you know, so.
I just have a question for a principal and also for a member who's an educator. Um, one thing that I heard Mr. Martin say is staff, I think, gets the recognition they deserve. And I'm wondering if maybe, um, you know, having some kind of program where a peer can nominate you to be recognized on some level by the school board, because just an attor or an attagirl goes a long way. You know, you know, to hold up somebody as, this is somebody who's doing great in our school, you know, something to try to achieve, especially when I'm hearing that our, you know, our dedicated staff, you know, their McDonald's staff, they get 1.9, and what do, what do we have keeping them here? You know, so I think it would be nice if we get some sort of recognition as well.
I think, I think anytime you can like send staff, it's amazing. If any of you want to, I mean, you already dedicate your time, but if you wanted to come into the building and just walk through with any one of us, and as we're walking into the room, we tell you what the teacher is professional for, can you actually shake their hand and say thank you? That would go almost as far as some type of recognition at this level. Because they just want to see if they, when Patty walks through the building and she thanks people for what they're doing or, you know, sits down with a student and reads or does a math problem, everybody lifts up. And so seeking the time to do that, I think, would mean the world to them. They, they don't see all the hours that you guys spend during the budget, doing, you know, going through all the things that you do, but coming into the school and recognizing them is the only thing they would expect. I think that would go a really long way, but I recognize time is precious.
Thank you for that information. Great on you.
You know, we hear that I have found a whole thousand, by the way, is a great support. And a few years ago, they asked them what we can do to display a level. Thank you for the time, and Jesus, I got up on the board, they were like, here, here. That's good, but thank you really so much. And that's, it seems, and more, sometimes you want to take this stuff, but go the real thing that just got miles. I mean, one of those.
Wait, wait, if any of you were to come down and say, you know, great job launching, I think that they would be thrilled, you know, that somebody on the school board took time to recognize all the work that was put into that. You know, behind the scenes, all the extra hours that the teachers did to work for buildings. They do a ton of work, a ton, and it's just kind of, oh, they're very hard, you know, and so celebrating them I think they go a long way, but it will be done.
Okay, so next to try to think, I think, maybe one for one, maybe getting the community. I mean, everybody has different demands, everybody's got some knowledge, you know, time or portion of time. And maybe have the, or as much of a leader as we can, get a deeper build up. I think that's a great idea. And we're. Only we don't have to worry about allergies or, you know. Anything else to add to the demonstration? Thank you for what you did, thanks. Stay in and stay out. And the peers who probably share, we'll come to it. Good to hear your pleasure. Thank you. All right, let it be.
So with the last meeting, we had some conclusions with the language on some of the more articles. So we went back and had Kathy talk to Dr. Stia some certification on what was going in, what was coming out. And we need to take votes on these prior to the public hearing. So your budget number hasn't changed from your original vote on the budget, but we simply take an actual vote on the more article itself. Um, the M B C was really anxious to get these, and I think we talked about it the last meeting. We were okay with us giving it to the M B C, we put this disclaimer at the top, highlighted it in yellow, that you not received or approved the new language so that they were aware that it's still coming for you. So that's what we need to do tonight, that is our task. So we can start with, we're going to just go through the one or two. Okay. So number two is to see if the Denver School District will vote to raise and appropriate the budget committee's recommended amount of flying. We don't have that yet, so we support schools for payment established to the school district officials agents and for payment of statutory obligations of the district, so it's not due to corporation voted on in other more articles. So you have a school board recommended amount at the top that you voted of 26 million, eight eighty-three, three thirty. So that would be ready with that motion and kind of vote for that more article through board, what's number.
Okay, so there are motions on the 26 million, eight hundred eighty-three, three hundred, three, eight hundred eighty-three thousand, three hundred thirty dollars figure.
Recommend, uh, motion to approve that budget now.
Motion to approve, seconded by Jane. Question, I'll go straight to the vote.
Question, Andy, did they give you any inkling, any idea of what might be acceptable?
So there were two different numbers that were given, let's see if I can pull them. There was one given by Mike, and I want to say it was a couple of lovely 650 K from that number. And there was a second number given by Karen that was 950, both, it involved a lot. Um, no indication really of where the overall committee would land, but those were the only two actual numbers I got were, I think it was 654, maybe 950, something, but in those areas.
And then they justify?
Uh, Mike did, I didn't fully understand what he was talking about, and I have to look at it again, but he, he works on the state budget, when he has a state, he works the state budget. The way he was talking about was they, they work with a lapse of 3%, so he was looking at 97% of this number or, or something to do with that. Um, I, I don't remember Karen's specification for her number at the top, so.
So probably what he was talking about in that, it encompasses with a surplus. From listening to him speak, you know, again, but I've heard him say similar things in the past. And I think this might encompass possible surpluses based on numbers in the past too.
Right, I think what he, I think what he had said in the previous meeting was that one, one of the things that they do is they come up with a budget and then they say, okay, well, if we had surplus, if we had 3% more, what would we plan to do, and if we had 3% less, how would we make that work? And so I think what he's basically treating number on is 3% of what we have there, you know, that we should be able to make that work somehow.
Keep in mind, I could just make a comment on that, that when states have to pay budgeting, they do it in much more immediate, compact time periods. We're being asked to work into the future, way into the future, and put together a budget that doesn't expire till July 2021. So that, that, you know, that 3% may work for the state. Um, but if their time period is very different than. um, but if their time period is very different than ours, you know, much closer, uh, so we really have to project into the future, 3% is a bunch of cushion, given the, the unknown.
Now, I did find my notes, uh, Mike's suggestion was, um, 672,000 off of our recommended number, which is 2.5% less, not 3, um, and Karen's was 983,000 less than our number, which is 5.8% off.
A justification.
Uh, I don't have, no, no justification, I don't recall that she gave any detail, but I, I should, we'll sort it out.
What was the tax rate increase?
That might, maybe, maybe she was working off a target tax rate, I think that's her, I think she had a target tax rate in her, in her mind, and that is the number to support getting to that target tax.
Right now, with the motion on the floor, shall we vote? Although in favor of supporting the 26,008,833.30, students have a claim, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approve?
Aye.
The ayes have it, please vote to approve.
Number three, to be September School District will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $30,000 for the purpose of floor replacement and exterior painting district-wide to set funds to come from the school building capital reserve fund previously established for the purpose. Um, the, the MVC did ask for clarification, the only clarification we added was district-wide, because they want specific buildings, and these two projects happen to be in Alderland, um, to ask for your information.
Can I ask a, a general question? Um, so, I believe on this sheet, our votes will be recorded, not just a, a pass, right?
It will be like 4-0.
So, um, will, will Mr. Russell have a chance to weigh in on these, or not? Okay, so, so we'll have a, we'll have four here total, okay.
All right, is there a motion on number three?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And second, any discussion, clarification of all buildings, not each building, um, utilizing some of the funds, based on, um, Josh's recommendation, Andy?
Um, just another, uh, note from my note, and, uh, meaning, there's also some discussion about what the actual name of this fund is, I think it was settled that, that school building capital reserve fund is the appropriate name, um, it was written in two different ways, in two different places, so there was some question. Um, Jerry Flurry actually took, took responsibility for that confusion, said the name wasn't terribly important, but did come to agree with that's the name, um, and I'll throw a note out there that with Jerry stepping down, um, a lot of stuff is moving from his care as trustee of trust funds, to, uh, I can't remember the exact name, something for TD Bank, TD something or, um, and when that kind of transition happens, he does play a, to engage us and all the other stakeholders in the town to kind of go to that meeting and see what else changes and stuff, so, just wanted to get that out there, that at some point we'll have a little bit more clarity on some of these funds, and where, how they're changing Jerry's proportions.
Shall we move to the questions? Although in favor of $30,000 for purpose of floor replacement and exterior paint district-wide, do you find that's any, on, on the side?
And number four, to be September School District will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $102,500 to be added to the school building capital reserve fund for the purpose of continuing work on the capital, bringing the project, ABA upgrades district-wide, gas, fire, heating units at Pembroke Academy, hot water heaters and dishwashers district-wide, fire and light safety district-wide, and to certify and extend heat equipment at Pembroke Academy and Three Rivers School. So, again, asking for detail, and we spelled everything out, so that voters would be informed about exactly what that, that, um, being, it's for, and you've seen Josh's approach all the time, where he has, you know, set him off, put aside that money that we want into that. And, um, there, there was some, uh, discussion about the fact that the board had indicated they would be interested in raising that money from taxation, um, and I think that's why the board, so, and the state board was not.
Option number three.
Shall we, maybe the second one, um, any discussion, any further discussion, Andy?
Uh, because, you know, what Patty said, there was some discussion about why that was, uh, why that, sorry, to raise taxes rather than for surplus, um, there was one other, yes, both other committee, besides myself, I believe it was Mr. Flurry, and the, the justification was that this is something that the budget committee has actually asked us to do, um, is to get on the CIP track, and this not coming from surplus is purposeful, because these are things that we have said we want to do in the next five years, um, so we need to fund them, if we don't fund them, they're on the CIP plan, they're scheduled to happen, the money won't be there for it, um, so it makes sense to do this not as surplus, because possibly surplus isn't there, and then these things don't get funded, and then you end up with moves that don't get maintained on a timely schedule, and you end up with buildings falling apart, uh, so I, I support this motion, um, and I, I think that it, keeping in mind with how the town of Pembroke, um, is operating as a whole right now, and the department submitted CIP plans, and we're on board with that now.
Uh, as a CIP member, I was president when, when asked to, the schools were asked to operate what the town does, putting money away by taxation, so I do support this also. And we're looking at a move that could cost $253,000, um, and if the money's not there, then there's a special meeting, and we'll have to vote on it, this way, everything stays level, no surprises.
Think what the town does for what, if major projects, so, we would need time to, to follow the, the position.
Who's their representative?
And, I might correct, the reason that September is coming, except, yeah, September's there, is, um, to 1,003,000, the community, right, September's district, for it. I mean, there's that too. All right, big vote, although in favor of appropriating the sum of $102,700 to the school building capital reserve fund, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
On your post, hands your hand up, please, let's vote.
Okay, number five, to be September School District.
Do we all vote?
Yes, we will, we'll vote to approve the top item set forth in a collective bargaining agreement reached between the Pembroke School Board and the Education Association of Pembroke for the 2021, 21, 22, 23, 24, this year, which calls for the following estimated increases in salaries compared to the current staff level. For 2021, it's 436,954, 21, 22 is 120,339, and 22, 23 is 406,959. And then you further, um, raise and appropriate the sum for the first year. And again, the contract has been ratified by the board, um, so, vote.
Motion to approve. And seconded, question, comment?
Uh, my question, if the board has ratified this contract, does that mean the district is now on the hook for the end, just for the funding comes from?
No.
No.
It's, um, you've ratified that, that this contract is going forward to the voters, but now you could both know that you don't support the contract or you have to do it.
Okay.
Uh, so, as you stated earlier, first year is a 1.8% increase, um, and like you said, this is not the same for every teacher, because there are teachers currently, like 55, that are off step, is that right? So, those teachers are not getting paid, uh, the same as their peers would be that may have been hired after the freeze, so, they need to be brought up to that step, uh, and it will be, it's a decent chunk of change for, for those teachers, but it's the right thing for us to do as a board and as a community, to equalize those teachers, um, plus the increases are 1.8, 2.1, 2.2, something like that, over the life of the contract, uh, a relatively small, our teachers are still well behind other schools in the district and the surrounding area, um, and the, the, this increase for them, basically what it is, is, uh, I would say more of a pat on the back sort of job, and sticking around, than even getting, you know, it, it will get the most dedicated, and the loyal to stay, um, if there was any thought in your mind, but it's not by any means getting them where they need to be, you know, district-wide or in the area, um, plus, on the tail end of this, directly come along, the early retirement benefit packages are gonna save us money in the long run, so, uh, as far as I go, I, I was there for these, I do support it fully, and I believe we should move forward and prevent this budgeting elsewhere.
I'd also just say that I, I support this, um, I think that they deserve more, um, and I, you know, it's a statement that I sent to the budget committee, we've been told by administration within the past, that we've defined people that have left, that have claimed salary as part of that decision, um, if we want to keep having a high quality of education here, you can not pay people, it's not wanting to keep people, it's not wanting to attract people, um, so, yeah, we, we can't see any way forward under the, given the teacher what they deserve.
Recently too, uh, I think it was two years ago, the town gave the police department a raise list, because they were losing police officers, police officers, we hired here, go to the academy, serve out two years, and then, you know, down the road. So, to keep, to protect our investment, they increased the pay for those, those police officers, and, and essentially that's what we're doing, when the teachers come here, they hire, we do, when they move on, when they through professional development, going toward their masters, we pay for a portion of that, and, you know, it, it is a return on our investment if we're paying them anymore now, so we keep them, and that money, we've already supported them with a faith here.
When I was on the budget committee, when I was the school board, right, to the budget committee, one of my issues was a lack of consistency regarding healthcare, we're already, we're, we are consistently on, you know, for, for healthcare off to bid, for insurances off to bid, nobody ever addressed, factually, the fact that depending on which branch of Tom Pembroke employee you work for, determine the type of healthcare you receive, and what the teachers get for a health plan is nowhere near comparable to what some of the municipal employees get. They have a much more generous program, um, they, their share of, um, their contribution is much less than what the teachers get, um, so, there's, there's a lack of consistency there, and this does nothing to address that inequity, um, so, certainly, I mean, we all know, we could not fill that position, that's how I feel. We, we do a service to our community if we can't offer competitive value. I'm not sure if it's being competitive, but it may keep people here longer. Move to questions, any other comments? Although in favor of the proposed, um, agreement between the Education Association of Pembroke and the Pembroke School Board, signify by saying aye. I'm, I'll propose, the ayes, hold here, okay? Thank you.
Number six, to be, it's the Pembroke School District will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of up to $35,000 to be added to the site improvement of the Pembroke Trust Fund previously established for the purpose of redesigning the old main entrance at Pembroke Academy and to fund even district-wide, with such amounts to be funded from the June 30th, 2020, unassigned fund balance available for transfer July 1st, 2020. So, this is an article that would be not funded for surplus, and this is first, that's right.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, and the seconded? Um, that was proposed by the special committee, or recommending, given that special committee on the night's one vote?
Yeah, very little discussion on that one, um, because it's a relatively small dollar amount, and because it's being funded from surplus.
I just have a question about the redesign, is that athletic only, really, no, maybe it isn't. Yeah, I think, so, Pembroke Academy, is that ABA, Command, is that EA? I don't have that.
I think that's something, yeah, no, Pembroke Academy, it's not the, they.
Well, that's the old academy.
Yeah, it's the first fee entrance, it is, yeah.
That's my understanding.
I believe that's correct.
Right, yeah, but this is the SNU, and, for it to, EA, that's one? The old, the old main entrance.
The horseshoe, yeah, walker, that's what I was thinking of, what they're talking about, but this is, this is just temporary, that's set up.
This was the main entrance to Pembroke Academy, I want that, maybe it's two, I don't know.
If the budget committee has already voted on that, do we still have the option to edit that?
They have to.
They're going to take away the ability to do that.
Okay, 'cause I was thinking it was also the horseshoe and bomb.
Okay, then let me get that from Josh.
I can probably get over that one, I'll, I'll.
Should we table that in the line?
Sure.
Can we, can we, can we, table this?
Hold it.
Hold that back, okay.
Um, I thought of one other thing just now, I don't know what happened, but we typically have a, an article right after the contact that says it failed, you get permission to have a special piece, everyone keeps putting that actually down the wire, I believe.
Yeah.
And then, um, if you want to, you can have it reported.
Okay, um, new number six.
How about five?
Five.
I, well, it will become six, it will become six, yes.
Okay, um, in the event that, um, Ward Article Five does not pass, um, does the board recommend, will the board recommend a petition to the, what is the petition to the?
Superior Court, you think so?
Yeah, Superior Court for a new, you have to get a, a, from the court, um, for, no doubt.
For special, huh?
For a special district meeting. And that one doesn't need, budget committee, a personal, you know, $5,000.
Motion to approve.
I vote.
Motion made, and seconded, um, question. Although in favor.
Let's move on to seven, for now, to be September School District will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of up to $10,000 to be added to the knowledge of the Pembroke Trust Fund previously established, with such amounts to be funded from the June 30th, 2020, unassigned fund balance available for transfer on July 1st, 2020, uh, budget committee, they recommend that one. Uh, budget committee, they recommend that one be banned.
Motion to approve. Second.
Andy.
Um, just to add some color, if my brain's working right, um, I believe the main discussion around that was, um, I don't think hardly anything's ever been withdrawn from that one, it's not that old. Um, and just patient given was, it's really something that's meant for, um, either more catastrophic emergencies or large oval projects, servers that can cost multiple tens of thousands of dollars to replace. So, uh, the age of that fund means that it's not really up to that kind of buffer level that we might get at yet, which is why we have not gone up. So, just some, some context of the fund.
Motion to approve.
All right, shall we vote? All those in favor?
Motion.
I think it's seconded.
Uh.
Any, um, all those opposed? Okay.
Hey Josh, which is the?
Good afternoon.
So, number six, with thirty-five thousand dollars to the site improvement trust?
Yep.
And it was for the old main entrance?
Yep, so some of that was for, what, paid, money away for paving.
Is it a horseshoe?
And then the other remaining funds is to draw up plans to redesign everything of what would be known Walker House?
So we didn't, we're talking about, not talking about the S A U, we're talking about the horseshoe.
We're talking about the horseshoe, yeah.
Absolutely.
Then would that would be a design of whatever we can get with that out on this area to try and stop the five entrances and things that we have going there in such a short span?
So then we have nothing in plan to fix the entrance anywhere for you?
It's planned, right?
The a- actual entry? Yes, so last year you guys.
Okay, okay, so that's in number four.
So that's last year's items, um, that's not in this year's warrant articles. You guys granted me some funds at the end of the year to have some A D A drawings drawn up, and we're just wrapping those up. Um, we're in the ballpark of that, so there were six specific, um, areas within this building that we are in the process of getting drawings and, um, applicable funds associated to them.
So then at some point, you will have the drawings for, for something A D A use?
You will have the A D A drawings, yep.
And maybe some work to get it done?
Uh, we will have to come up with some money. That definitely then make clear, um, coming into the final stages of getting those out.
Thanks so much, thanks Dan for getting that.
Oh, good. Yeah, I gotta go. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Do we need a vote on that one? Um, Andy, is that it? Will you, for number seven?
No, number six, we go back.
Number six. Okay. Um, any other questions? The others English favor are, um, the thirty-five thousand dollars, um, for the site improvement, the spendable trust, um, through the S A U. Andy, opposed, none, or feel votes?
Number eight, P C, Pembroke school district will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of up to thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars to be added to the equipment installation and labor spending trust fund previously established for the purpose of replacing and maintaining camera systems required, a new pickup truck, and zero return dollars, with such amounts to be funded from the June thirtieth, twenty twenty unassigned fund balance available for transfer on July first, twenty twenty. So obviously that amount does not pay for all of those things, but that is part of the justice, I can say.
You're a magician. Uh, motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Second.
And the second, okay. Um, discussion ended.
Uh, trying to add a little bit of color here. Um, the budget committee asked for a little more info on this, they, Patty sent, or Patty sent some of that email already. They did ask about, um, a target fund balance, similar to the previous one I spoke about where the technology needs to come out of, to where we wanted to be before we start drawing, they were wondering if that was the case with this fund as well. I don't believe that's, you know, anything that they want written into work or whatever, but they did table this one, um, so I assumed they'll board on it this week. They also wanted us a little bit more clarity on what the specific purpose of this trust fund is, which I think is now in the article.
Hey.
Um, I'm just curious, do we have access or can I document that name, the file, and just the general description of my panel?
It's in the, it's in the budget binder, there's a, in the, you put it on the table, it's a trust fund balance, and at the very top of the spreadsheet, there's a little title we're naming.
Okay.
You have the one budget, right?
Do you not have a budget here?
I think it was, I forgot one, it did not, I will go through.
It did not.
I did, I got a bunch of.
You didn't get those?
No. I got all the, you know, the, do you want to look at it, please?
Yeah, sure, thank you.
I mean, I have had the documents, bro.
I thought I had seen that one. Yeah. No, but I, okay. So there's a total of, definitely.
Yeah, it should be on there.
Okay, thank you. So I'd say information that's available there does not satisfy.
We didn't, we didn't have that detail in, we had it, we need to have that.
Right, the wording in here about the fire systems and the pickup truck, it was uniformal, it was not there.
Okay. There's no way you're giving one of those.
It, I think, even though they had Josh's spreadsheet, which showed what he's saving for, they wanted it filled out in the warrant article, so we did that, I mean, on Thursday.
Then we think that's a, a little bit of a issue. Okay, um, any other questions? Uh, was in favor, um, raising and appropriating the sum of thirty-seven thousand seventy dollars from, um, uh, trust fund, yeah, some budget balance, uh, which, uh, bound available to transfer based on the I.
The I.
Imposed. I'm not going to vote when you have them, you won't be too worried.
We do have some, uh, conversations that happen on hold, and we may, we may have the option of adding the warrant article at the end of the meeting, so we'll, we may come back to that.
Number five, all three of you.
So the, um, new suicide prevention policy that we changed, school board negotiations has been published and is on for a second reading, so please take a look at that, if you're prepared to vote at the next meeting, we can be so, with any questions or language conditions, we could get those to me at that time.
Um, I was wondering if we could just open that up for discussion, if we have questions today, or do we not even have any questions today?
Um, it's up to you, with the board.
Mine too.
Um, sure.
Um, do we have to make a motion to express first, or table before we ask questions? Do we have to make the motion before?
No, we haven't seen any action, so.
Okay, okay, um, I did look over this policy, and I did see that, um, let's see, item B, debt requires an annual staff training.
Yep.
And so I was wondering, um, it doesn't really specify the length of debt training or anything like that, but one of the questions I, I was wondering, would that require us to add an additional professional development day or time?
That's been, um, pretty hot to date around the state, um, we are required to provide two hours of training, and it was, did not have a financial impact, and we pushed back a lot on that, and so, if we have hourly employees, such as care professionals, custodians, service workers, we pay them an extra two hours to complete the training, so it absolutely does have a physical impact. Um, the principals have been very creative, we've already started, even with the training, even not having to put a weight fit. Um, some, I think, some are doing small chunks that that means, some people are doing videos, we've actually worked together in the late season superintendent association, we're going to pool all of our resources and our ideas for the training modules that are being created, so that we have a menu, and people can pick and choose what they want to do for training. And work, but it's, we don't have an extra day, and it needs to contact to add for that training, so the people are being created with the city, and we can.
And my second question is, um, what sort of budget, it's what, implication? Should we expect from, I mean, it's mandated by the state, we're required to do it. Um, so I'm just wondering, you know, I know you probably didn't come from here with any numbers, but I.
Well, the, I think what we're trying to do, um, so if we're doing instructional hours for our calendar, then theoretically, if we budgeted, like, for service workers, we budgeted for them to be here every day, all day. We're hoping that we can find two hours within, if they're, you know, budgeted time, they'll go over. Assuming they don't get paid for at least two hours of the school year, because we're thinking that that would allow us to pay them for those two hours, to have it filled in our budget. That's the plan.
Right, that's for the training, but there's additional, also responsibilities with the district suicide prevention coordinator and the building suicide prevention liaison, we're asking people, we're required to have people take hits with one, and that's additional responsibility, and I don't know if they're going to be in strike then, I guess it's up.
No, we, we, even though we now have to designate by policy, we've always had people in the building that if there was students in person, self-harm, there was a team in place, somebody is designated to handle that situation, so we've always had that, you know, before the policy.
Okay. Andy.
Picking back off what April said, pretty much talking to the public, very good point. We get mandates like this from the state often, not optional, they need to be adopted, somebody needs to take on those responsibilities, and most time that person not getting paid more. Any other job, fire sector thing, you get more responsibilities, you get more money. It's just another way the teachers are not getting paid what they're worth, and another reason that we should support any budget is our teachers more like what they deserve.
Um, I just want to add a public comment to kind of go along with Andy. We currently do not have this policy, and we're required by the state to create this policy just for N H, or I say, one ninety-three J, for anyone who happens to tune in and want to know more about that, so this is a policy we are required to come up with.
Um, I just have a follow-up question. This policy is for suicide prevention in response, and one thing that hit me when I was reading through this, um, if we're talking about self-harm, um, self-harm is different than suicide, because when you have autism, one of the symptoms can be self-harm, um, but that's not to the extent of suicide. So I'm curious, how are we going to prevent a child or putting a child and that child's family in a critical situation if this child is exhibiting self-harming behavior that may not be suicidal? How do we delineate between that, and I'm not sure if that's just something it does state that, um, there'll be a, I forgot the exact word, but the superintendent will come up with a plan.
And, and that's where you would rely on, who does it be? If someone, if a teacher reports that self-harm, then you would rely on the expert in the building to determine whether or not there needs to be an assessment for suicide, or hopefully there's a team of people that know that do intend, you know, some action will be taken, you know, any, if they self-harm, but they would be able to choose that whether that was because they're on the cause of their autism, or if they were a victim of any other kind of crisis.
And what should we expect as far as, um, you know, the, the plan, is that a kind of more subjective plan? Or would it be something sort of that, more, kind of like a checklist, like this is the, what should we anticipate to do with that?
We still have that work to do, I think we all have protocols in each of our schools, but we now, I think it makes sense for us to have one district-wide protocol that can be designated as part of the policy, or as part of the policy.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Uh, I'm just, and I'm prepared to vote for any of this.
I have to. Um. Can I just have one more reading from mine?
No.
Just to go through.
I'll help you out there.
Yeah, no, I did not expect that, I'm speculating, I mean, yeah, I was like, wow! Um, only because I, we haven't spent time as a ministry of teams deciding on some of these fire points, and I would like to have that as a support policy. So thank you, that's great. Um, just a question, the policy, um, I did print it out from the representative Neumanshers school board. Um, the policy that was on in the drive, has anything been changed from the recommended policy from the Neumanshers school board?
This should be just the sample policy, and typically if we changed anything, it would be redlined.
Okay.
So it should be identical.
Okay, thank you.
Number six, informational evidence. Information to be shared.
I just had a thought, we were talking about this in previously when I saw April. Um, typically we vote on the, uh, N H S B A policies that will be discussed at the convention, the resolutions that will be discussed at the delegate convention this weekend, and we have to discuss them more.
Are you registered? I am, and I am registered, you do? I mean, what? I'm re, I have registered, oh, and I do plan to put them there.
So, there's that. Typically, we tend to support the recommendations of the N H S B A. Um, and as I went through them again this year, there were some that were fairly hotly contested last year, and they reappeared this year. Um, basically gun policy stuff on there. Um, and these policies that schools want to implement are not in line with how the state Neumanshers works as far as gun policy goes. Therefore, any policies, basically what would happen, it would be a patchwork system, whereas in one district it would be lawful, another district would be unlawful, lots of regrets if you were a possession of fire. Um, making, that being said, I, I, any, any, I went through them, and there was only one, and I was not a hundred percent sure if the N H S B A supported it or not. Um, no, all the other, all the other resolutions were, these were, they were, these are the ones that are the most hotly contested. But there was one that was, I was kind of indecisive on where the N H S B A stood. In the past, they'd been opposed to any school districts enacting any firearms laws, again, state regulation. This one was a little bit wishy-washy, I think it was from, the one from Oyster River, um, and those schools out there their own. Um, so, that being said, any resolution goes against what Neumanshers law is, I would be opposed to supporting it. Um, just for a simple fact, I'm an firearm owner, and I don't want to be put in a position of having to worry about where I am at any given time. It's up to the state at that point in time, if I can't be there, then it has to come down from the state. If I can't be in Pembroke or Oyster River, then it has to be everywhere, not just in one place or another. I think he had a similar resolution on there too. Um, and I'm not, i- in, if the state says it so, then it is so, but for a locality to make it so, does not make it right. Uh, in my opinion.
So are you asking us as a board to give April's guidance?
Yeah, I think that's, I just said something like that, and, and, and that's all I'm saying, uh, and again, if, if it was a state law, statewide law, that firearms are not allowed on school properties, then yes, I'd be in favor of that, but it's not, therefore, uh.
And I can just, now, just tell you that we, the superintendent's just had this conversation many times, uh, and I spoke into the chief, I think we all have, and my feeling is that if I see a gun in a school, I call the police. Whether, I'm not going to determine whether this person goes as a threat, whether it's their right to have a gun or not have a gun, if I see a gun in a school, I call the police. So that's been our thing. And that's how I would continue, regardless of the policy. I believe safety of, um, students and staff is paramount. Um, respecting individual rights absolutely, but I, we don't want to be done.
And, and I'm, yes, absolutely, and that's not what I'm, I'm talking about.
I, I know, I just wanted to make that clear.
Because there are people who have weapons in their vehicles, there are people that carry weapons regularly, and as of today, if you have a concealed, or a pistol revolver weapon in state of New Hampshire, it is lawful for you to carry a weapon on school grounds. Therefore, other, and, and again, and what I'm saying here is I'm not supporting that one way or the other, I'm opposed to individual locality to put a policy in place that would make someone a criminal in that, in that.
I would be reluctant to vote one way or another, but we've selected Timber, we've favored April to, to be our representative. Then I think, um, you know, if we were to vote, it would be advisors. I think people can best represent our board in the last three quarters.
I think the, the best, and appropriate action would be if you saw a resolution that you were adamantly opposed to school board recommendations and by April, that he, his board is strongly opposed to this. We'd like you to vote for that.
We've done that before.
So, ask us that.
Yeah.
Can you add one?
Oh. Alright, so, resolution, jointly Oyster River and Noddy Hammond Dover. Uh, the NHSBA supports legislation to restrict possession of firearms on school property, living possession, certified police officers only. Um, the rationale, New Hampshire is one of only three states that does not prohibit gun owners from bringing firearms onto school property. In New Hampshire state law, anyone legally holding a gun can carry that weapon onto school grounds and into schools, which is not true. Um, local boards or town councils can act, are, cannot act to restrict them. The proliferate, proliferation of firearms within schools presents a danger to students, school personnel. Current initiatives which harden entrances to schools to which the state has security and movement dollars are futile if there are no legal restrictions for bringing firearms onto school property in the first place. Uh, NHSBA Board of Directors' recommendation to support alternative language. Uh, supports legislation to restrict possession of firearms on school property to authorized law enforcement personnel only. Uh, which is, now this is again, again, in opposition to what they did last year, um, the same thing. Board of Directors' recognition of the NHSBA membership is still on the issue of guns and firearms on school grounds. Similar proposed resolutions have been defeated at the delegate assembly in twenty seventeen and twenty nineteen. The NHSBA Board of Directors notes that approximately forty-seven other states have already, already have laws limiting guns and firearms on school grounds in one form or another. Further, the NHSBA Board of Directors also wishes to convey membership that, to membership, is that the NHSBA is not a single issue body, and this proposed resolution is only one of dozens of res- resolutions. I can't do it again. NHSBA has relative to school board governance, what is playing priorities, school funding, you know, areas of interest.
People, would you like a vote of the board to provide guidance, or are you comfortable?
I'm comfortable, but however, if, as a board, you would like to give direction, I'm totally open to voting as a board, or choosing.
On this measure, is there a motion to provide April with guidance at the meeting on Saturday? Is there a motion?
I would motion, then I'd body. Like, have you, uh, right?
Yes.
I would probably for that.
But you, well, agree-
Motion to provide, oh, motion to provide guidance, April, at this. Also, okay.
Okay, so there is a motion, is second, to provide April with guidance. Would that measure? Just like, like a law.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, 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 we're not going to tell you, okay.
I, I guess I, I think, I think I understand the heart of what Jean's saying, and I think I would support that. Like, I think I would be in favor of whichever side the school board association lands on, as long as it's a universal decision, and, and either, guns are okay on school property, guns are not okay on school property. I don't like the idea of waters being muddied where you don't know, you know, if you're, if you go to a basketball game at one school or the other, there's not a clear way to tell if you're okay there. If, if they decide that guns are never okay on school property, I'd support that, if they say they are, I'd support that. But I think what Jean's saying is, whichever decision, whichever way to go, should just be not confusing, like, I would agree with him on that.
Okay, so the way I understand it is that, first of all, we have to vote to see, we're going to provide guidance, and then there's going to be a second motion to provide, kind of, like that guidance.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, so show, is, is there any further discussion regarding, should we be giving April advice? Although in favor of providing April with an advisory opinion on this board regarding this particular issue, can I, although supported? Read one. Motion carries.
Okay.
So now, is there a motion regarding this specific advice that you'd like to carry April to?
Well, gonna be a general, but I would, I motion that we provide April the advice to follow New Hampshire state law, and also federal gun free school zone law on this resolution. Basically, it's-
You want, you want to follow the New Hampshire and state law and-
Yeah, the federal, essentially, not, so we have another discussion.
Are, are we just going to have, this is getting a little, are we just going to have a discussion without?
State law.
State law, which is one of three states that currently allows, um, people with weapons to go to be on school grounds, even for, okay, legally.
Legally, which is, you know, okay, so, I motion that, alright, so that-
Is there a second?
I have a second, a motion to advise, follow state statute regarding that one school. I got five minutes left.
Okay, um, if I understand, New Hampshire School Board Association, what we are proposing to provide, the motion to provide guidance to April is contrary to what the School Board Association is recommending.
It appears so.
Okay.
Begin, from now, now we can probably open the discussion?
Yes, we are.
Alright, so, being here on resolution ten submitted by Oyster River and Noddy Hammond Dover, but at, um, number eleven, um, Keane is proposing restrict firearms on school property except authorized police and security personnel. And then they go into the whole gun free school zone. NHSBA Board of Directors not supporting. So you've got similar resolutions, one's supported, one's not supported. Um, and again, as, I shouldn't have to gun it, but throwing in there, under the gun free school zone act, there is a stipulation that if this falls with the state, if a person is licensed and legal, state law applies, whatever the state decided at that point in time. So, um-
I don't know that I want our administrator setting to go up and, if somebody is carrying a gun, and often to show their-
We won't.
And that, no, that's not, no, absolutely not.
In fact, we won't, we call the police.
But if the language continues to say, people who are legally able to have it, I'm not sure that our administrator or staff, um, are going to be shown to go up and, or kind of question.
And that, I don't think that's part, that's even part of the question, it's just an outright, um-
Is this default assumption that if somebody's carrying a gun on school property, that they have a right to carry gun on school property?
It's not default, it doesn't, but it is, it's actually the law in state of New Hampshire is such, that if you-
Anybody can carry gun.
Not anybody, not anybody, you have to be, can't be a student, you know. Um, you also have to have, carry a firearm, you have to have a pistol revolver, like, issued by the chief of police in the state of New Hampshire, or the state-
And that's what I'm saying, is that if, unless you vote-
And it wouldn't be their, it wouldn't be their job to ascertain whether that person is lawful or not.
Okay.
But what my point was on this is that it's, it would be a patchwork law. You could be in certain, in a, in a certain place and be lawful, and then cross, follow your kid to a game and be unlawful at that point in time, not knowing because you're not part of that community. Um, an administrator could be, you know, a concealed carry person, and go to a meeting in another school district, and that person at that point in time would be, uh, accountable, essentially. So, all I'm asking is that we do not support this resolution, um, as supported by the NHSBA based upon the fact that there would be confusion involved, um, until such a time as the state intervenes and changes the law.
April, what, Andy?
I was, being kind of hit with the last point, I just wanted to be clear, um, I, I would support a motion to basically recommend to the school board association that they follow state statute, and my reasoning for that support is that I don't think the school board association is the proper body to mandate any of this, and that in New Hampshire state legislature, if, if they feel there needs to be a law keeping firearms on school property, it's their job to do that, as our, the lawmakers. Um, so, my opinion is basically, the school board association should be referring to the legislative body that makes the rules, and they should do their job to make a rule that they want to have delivered.
Um, just for those who have sort of been in this discussion before, as delegates to the New Hampshire Support Association, um, these are, um, measures that are, the delegation will vote on. It doesn't mean that it's going to become law, but essentially, what would, what would happen if a measure were to pass? A sample policy be drafted, a lobbying effort to change state law?
Lobbying effort.
A lobbying effort.
Yeah, that's what it would be.
But it would not be a law.
Yeah.
Right, it, right, it should, right, we would be doing the, okay, resolution, it's a sense of the board, it's a sense of the community. Yeah, it's not law by anyone, that it can only come from.
But it would, would open the door for a locality to pass this law. And I, and it's been done in the past, and not with the schools, but in the neighborhood, there was, there were laws passed, and there's suits going on.
But that would be, that would be done under the domain of the state legislature, not the school board association. The school board association, to the best of my knowledge, is the-
Not the school board association, but the locality itself, like Oyster River, yeah.
The lo- the locality can do that anyhow, with-
They could, yes, but-
What, regardless of what the school board association says. My sense is what the delegate assembly is going to do is represent their district.
Right.
And ultimately, depending on the vote, just as you have given the indication from previous years, that the delegates and their constituencies either agreed or disagreed, and that would be what would come out of this, no legislation whatsoever.
And it would give direction to the school board, to the school board association, um, basically is what it is.
Yeah.
But I, I guess, my, I, I, I'm just fundamentally opposed to that relation because of, it, it's not in the purview of a school district to make such, you know, uh, resolutions or laws, that's fair enough.
Should we move to question, or the people?
Sure, I just have another question, um, just to kind of get a sense, I think we're all on the same page on this, but some of these, um, measures have to do with fully funded mandates.
Yeah.
And I, my assumption is we would all support that. As a constituent. Mandate, you know.
You're, but you're not on this question.
No, are we limited to this question?
Oh, yeah, we had a question.
Okay, I didn't realize it was, I thought it was toward bias, not for this, okay, sorry, yeah, okay, thank you. Okay, that's helpful. Okay, so there, there are two different items we voted on.
No, just one.
No, there's ten.
No, I just, I just used that.
But, but at the delegation, there's two different measures-
Yep.
-that are similar in language, but are actually kind of saying different things, but the advisements.
The advisements are contradictory.
Right, okay.
But right now, we-
Okay, gotcha.
The board has decided that this is one specific, and I think you said it, Ken, you should be the poll.
The current New Hampshire state law about carrying guns on school property.
And that's the only one to this point, unless there's some other-
There's truth about guns.
Right, but I'm just saying that as far as issues go.
Gotcha.
This is the only one that we as a board, as of right now, are giving our recommendation for. If folks decide they want to go through this whole thing, I, you know, item by item-
Yeah.
-and say, we want to give April recommendations on each and every one of these, we can do that. If this is the only one that we want to give her a recommendation on, we can do that too.
The other one, yeah, okay, so let, move on, let's see this one.
So let, so, okay, okay. Although in favor of, um, the advice to April that, um, we support following state law regarding, um, guns on school property, signify my standing on it?
Aye.
So opposed, read one. Are there any informational items, are there any others?
And just the other resolutions on here are, pretty much have to do all with man, you know, mandates that the state puts out. Um, building funds, fully funding adequate education, um, and, you know, we've talked about every single one of these, time after time, wishing and hoping that the billiards will come through, the full, you know, the funding model will change. Um, and, you know, this is, pretty much the other nine are what we always talk about.
Okay, so are we comfortable with April making recommendations on behalf of the members of the school board?
Uh, yeah.
You have a heavy burden with April.
Oh, it's fun, it's long, but it was, I had a good time.
Hopefully they do a little.
Oh, they do.
They do. Um, public comment? Thank you. Um, do we have any pronounced public expression? If there is. Alright, according to New Hampshire RSA ninety-one dash A colon three, Roman numeral two, small letters C and D of the local vote, yes, all.
Yep.
Jean, Andy, and me, and to get to an agreement. For two, um, I will entertain a motion to the chairman.
Okay.
Moved and seconded any discussion, although in favor, um, it's proved one, motion has been further quote, and we entertain a motion on the purchase of, um, the course of purchase of negotiation of two forty-five Timber Hill Road.
Motion to add a war article for the purchase of two forty-five Timber Hill Road, um, as language from our attorney, it's, uh, had a purchase price of, or, within amount included in the interest amount.
Would you like me to read the whole thing for the record?
Sure.
Sure?
Shall the district authorize the school board to negotiate for the acquisition of fourteen Buster Linus Baker Park? Shout that Mr. Tom realized the School Board to negotiate for the acquisition of fourteen Foster Linus acre parcel of real property located at two forty-five Timber Hill Road on such terms and conditions as it deems to be in the best interest of the district, and further to appropriate the sum of eighty thousand dollars, with the understanding that the School Board need not expend the entire appropriation, and may decline to acquire the property if it deems the purchase price or the terms of sale to not be in the best interest of the district.
There's a second. Any discussion? Although in favor of the motion, it looks like that's a nine.
Aye.
Performed. Were not found. And there are any motion regarding status of the Grange Building.
I make a motion that, um, we produce a warrant article for the sale of Grange Building.
We will, um, then it's going to, we will do the other school.
Is there a second to the motion? Any discussion? Although.
Sorry, just a question for public record, is this a, a building that has not been declared a historical building from our research, and that we're in the business of educating students and not in maintaining historical buildings?
Without historical.
Yeah.
Although in favor of the lead.
Alright.
It was reported, there are none, or have been, we're looking at votes. Any other business that we do, um, before we leave, maybe we should go, in our schedule. At this point, February twelfth, February eleventh, um, which is a, um, which is primary day, and also our buildings are closed.
We have, um, there's executive warning on Wednesday, so we could be either Monday the tenth or Thursday the thirteenth. Or a different week altogether.
I'm sorry, the two day term, Monday the tenth or Thursday?
Thursday the thirteenth.
Okay.
Monday also Thursday.
Then, do we need, can we just change that, do we have to vote on it? Our next meeting will be Monday, February tenth, at Timber Academy in the library.
And one other thing, there are a number of items that I think we were going to be recommended to be added to the agenda. Um, ultimately, that is up to the chair, so those will be passed along to me.
Okay, when you, when you sent the email copy, we.
Oh, I didn't.
Are you wanting, do you want me to just do it from my notes?
That'd be great, yeah, I don't remember, there were a few, I just.
Oh, yeah, I'll do that, and then when, um, maybe I'll just send it to you or make sure it's better.
Okay.
Can I just add to that, like, could you know, um, uh, full review, something that you want to do every couple of meetings?
Yeah.
Been a while.
And this would be a good time to do that too, because the budget would be pretty much.
Okay. April, just, this is a trillion information, I'm sorry about that. When is the deadline to, for residents to apply to run for a school board petition?
Um, the third.
Okay, and they would do that at the S U office?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
You're asking for a motion, I'm making a right.
Motion is there.
Although in favor.
Thank you.
Although in favor.